This meeting is not called order, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. McGurven?
Here.
Ms. Witchy?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move the absent council member be excused.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council member Person be excused. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to a public hearing.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Council President, and council members. I'm here to do a public hearing on a surplus piece of property that is known as Sunset Court Park at 1124 Harrington Avenue Northeast. The Sunset Court Park has been identified during the project scoping to be a surplus property, and we are looking at an alternative location for the park that is within 400 feet for a larger park. Per the surplus property policy, we're basically a property that we no longer need can be surplus through this process, so we are looking for determination that Sunset Court Park is no longer needed for the purpose, and we're looking to surplus and dispose of the property. And as I had mentioned, okay, we're calling that policy procedure for the city of Renton. The location is in the Sunset Highlands area, or in the Sunset area where we're doing other projects as well, so most members are familiar with this area. This is the piece of property that is known as Sunset Court. Looks a little better with an aerial, so you can see what's going on, and then kind of an overview from the top. As you can see, it currently has playground equipment on it, and is in a surrounded area. So just here's some pictures of the existing site conditions. So the property was plotted in 1956, and sometime between 1956 and 1984, it made it into the city of Renton adopted plan as a developed park. We have been maintaining it, and we have installed the play equipment in the mid-2000s. And we also have, City Utilities located on this piece of property along the northern portion. So for a surplus property, we did an internal and external review, so we sent a review for, out to the internal departments within the city to see if anyone has any interest in this property, as it is no longer needed for the park. There was a request for an easement to be made over the city utilities, which are shown here, running across the top, a green line, I believe, a sewer. And then we also sent it to outside agencies, so WashDOT, King County Real Estate, the Renton Historical Society, and the Renton Housing Authority. We did hear back from two of them. The Renton Housing Authority is interested in the property, so they indicated their response on that. Their response was that they were interested in the fair market value of the property. There was appraisal completed on the property in December of 2015 for the $915,000, which we believe is assumed, or which is fair market value. The Community and Economic Development Department recommends that council approve this to be a surplus property, the Sunset Court Park, with the creation of the utility easements to be created during the time of development. So if council approves, the next step would be for the reading of the resolution later this evening, if there's no comments on my public hearing.
Good, thank you. Any questions from council? Do you have any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Was there anybody who wanted to testify on the surplus property issue?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And then, Mr. Mayor?
We have a, yes.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to concur with the staff recommendation to approve, to surplus the Sunset Court Park property located at 1124 Harrington Avenue Northeast, subject to the following condition, that the utility easement will need to be created over the existing city utilities.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Sunset Court Park surplus property proposition. Any questions, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and we do have a resolution for reading a little later. Thank you. Next is administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just really two items to highlight. I want to let the public know that the city of Renton residents now have a secure method to dispose of unwanted and expired medicines present in their homes. Renton Police Department has installed a kiosk designed to dispose of such medicines in the lobby on the first floor of City Hall. Medicines play an important role in treating many conditions and diseases, and when they're no longer needed, it's important to dispose of them properly to help reduce harm from accidental exposure or intentional misuse. The kiosk accepts bottles up to six inches in diameter and 12 inches tall. It does not accept medical waste. So we'd encourage the public, if you have, again, old prescriptions that are out of date and no longer needed, please bring them down, and free, clean, safe place to dispose of those medicines. Also want to just remind folks, we do have a lot of road construction still going on. You can read about where those are and some of the specific times of partial closures and detours on our website at rentonwa.gov backslash traffic impacts. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. Next is audience comments. We have one person sign up to address the council. Please give your name, city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. Diane Dobson.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor and city administrators. I come to you, Diane Dobson from North Renton, come to you tonight to speak to you about the Sartori build. The neighborhood has been active and engaged in the Sartori process. We've had meetings, gone to meetings, public comment, participated in the public hearing just recently, and expressed our concerns with the traffic and transportation, and that's kind of inside the scope of the Renton School District CEPA review process, et cetera. But I come to you tonight with a concern that lies outside of the immediate area of the school district property, and outside of the Renton School District Authority, and that is relating to a sex offender house that is located to be exact 417 feet away from the new parent pickup point for the Sartori Elementary School. This particular parcel houses between nine to 12 registered sex offenders. At one point, there were 15 offenders at this one location, and it's one parcel, but there's two houses. One house was a three-bedroom house that was converted without permits to a four-bedroom house, and houses eight offenders. There's another house, on the property, smaller house, that has four offenders on the property. The owner of the property is not a Renton resident or does not live in the area, is known within the system at the DOC for having these houses, that it's, he does get the guaranteed income with the DOC subsidies for those early release offenders. So, under RCW 7209340 relating to the supervision of the registered sex offenders and the public safety thereof, subsection 3A indicates any offender convicted of a felony offense against a minor victim after June 1996. The department is actually authorized to reject a residence location if the proposed residence is within close proximity to schools, childcare centers, playgrounds, or other grounds, or facilities where children of similar age or circumstance congregate. That same RCW further provides that the department reject the location for any offenders prohibited from living in a community protection zone. Community protection zone, as established by the state of Washington, is 880 feet, which is double the distance that this house is currently from the school district property. We reached out to the Department of Corrections, advised them of the conundrum that the community was facing, and they did not consider Sartori Education Center to be viewed the same as a school, and told us to get back in touch with them when the school district broke ground. So now I'm reaching out to the city of Renton to ask us for help with this process. In addition, per City Renton Municipal Code Title IV Development Regulations on Group Homes, group homes are categorized as a group of individuals not related by blood, marriage, adoption, or guardianship, living together in a dwelling unit as a single housekeeping unit under common management plan based upon an intentionally structured relationship to provide organization and stability. This type of group home is prohibited in the R-10 zoning of which this residence lies We've reached out to the Renton School District. Renton School District said they will work with the city of Renton and the Renton Police Department to make sure their children are safe, but we come to you now to ask for your help. The majority of these offenders are Level 1 or Level 2 offenders. The Level 2 offenders are categorized as a moderate risk to sexually reoffend within the community at large, and we're asking the city for an immediate review of the community protection zone as it lies in that area, and relates specifically to the Sartori Education Center and the elementary school. Review the occupancy standards for the city code and non-relatives living in one dwelling unit. Review the use of this residence as a group home as prohibited under Renton Municipal Code, and work with the Renton Police Department and the Department of Corrections to establish a buffer between Sartori and the community protection zone.
Okay, I think, thanks Diane. I think that's a very valid concern, and we will work with our police department and the Department of Corrections, and also check with the building code to see if there's any violations at that location, and then work from there. If there is no tool, this is a good time for us to address that with our legislators as we're doing our agenda, so we will work, and I'll get back to you with whatever we learn on this project.
Thank you, thank you very much, on behalf of the neighborhood for your support in that endeavor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have eight items for council consideration. Are there any items that council members like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move approval of the consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with a consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items from Committee of the Whole to present tonight.
Okay, Committee of the Whole Committee Report, request to surplus property on Sunset Court Park at 1124 Harrington Avenue Northeast. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to surplus the Sunset Court Park at 1124 Harrington Avenue Northeast, parcel number 7227801781. This is signed by the council president.
Move that council approve the committee report as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Committee of the Whole report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And that was the warm-up, Mr. Mayor.
I just noticed that Jason took the short one first.
We'll ask him to read the next one, which is outstanding news. We've reached consensus on the budget, so if you could present that for us.
Okay. Committee of the Whole Committee Report, 2017-2018 Biennial Budget. The Committee of the Whole reviewed the administration-proposed 2017-2018 budget in the amounts of $242,349,588 and $233,358,706 for 2017 and 2018 respectively. It recommends concurrence in the following actions. One, property tax levy. At the 2017 property tax levy, using the preliminary property tax worksheet provided by King County, showing estimated property taxes of approximately $24,200,000, which includes new construction annexation and re-levying of refunds, the total property tax levy is a decrease of 35.1% from the amount actually levied in 2016. The base 2017 levy with new construction annexation and corrections is $23,504,394, or 36.9% below last year's actual levy. Two, business license fee adjustment. Increase the business license registration fee from $110 to $150. Three, gambling tax exemption adjustment. Amend the gambling tax code to allow bona fide charitable or nonprofit organizations a full exemption from gambling tax if their purpose is to provide programs or facilities for meeting the basic health, education, or welfare needs to residents in Renton and other South King County communities. Four, utility rates and fee changes. Approve the proposed 2017-2018 4% wastewater, 4% surface water rate increase. 2018 1% solid waste rate increase, and the 2017 5.2% proposed King County metro sewer rate increase as outlined in the draft ordinances included with the proposed budget. Five, other rates and fee adjustments. Adjust various fees as identified in red in the proposed fee schedule located in Section VII Appendix of the proposed budget. Six, legislation. Approve the 2017-2018 proposed budget action items listed above, and incorporate any adjustments made by the mayor and city council. Draft and present the related legislation for first reading at council's regular meeting on November 14th. Adjustments are as follows. Increase emergency management coordinator new program request, .7 FTE, which is a full-time equivalent to 1.0 FTE, which is ongoing, $42,000 in 2017, $46,000 in 2018. Replace the loss of the COPS grant with funds set aside for Choice Neighborhood Grant Match one time, which is negative $375,000 police grant revenue in 2017-2018, and negative $375 CED Choice Neighborhood Grant expenditures for 2017 and $350,000 in 2018. Reinstate the Community and Economic Development limited-term position inadvertently left out of the budget, which is a one-time cost for $113,000 in 2017 and $121,000 in 2018, and add a half-time, a half-time, full-time equivalent parking officer, parking enforcement officer, and recognize increased parking fines and revenue. $48,000 in 2017, $54,000 in 2018 staffing costs and parking revenue. The Committee of the Whole also requested that the language included in the General Government Capital Investment Program Project Number 33 on page 5-40 be amended to strike the last sentence of the project description, which had inadvertently been included in the proposed budget document. This is signed by the council president.
Thank you, Jason. Mr. Mayor, I move the council concur in the Committee of the Whole report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Committee of the Whole report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yes, on behalf of the whole council, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and your administrators, and all the members of the staff that helped work to prepare that budget and answer all the questions that we had. It was, it was very well put together, and we, with the additions and changes that the council put in there, I think we have obviously a unanimous consensus on where we're going, and it's balanced, and has a lot of services, a lot of good additions, so very well done, and it's certainly a pleasure to have that biennial budget agreed to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corman, and I too want to thank our staff that worked for months putting together the budget, and thank the council for all the work that you guys have done in reviewing all of our proposals, and we did have a positive experience this year in which we weren't making cuts, we were actually making some additions in areas that we really needed it, and so we appreciate all the work that the council has done on this also, so thank you very much.
I wanted to thank you. I know, Mr. Mayor, you and I have discussed this during the year, but I think the approach where you've been giving us regular updates on your priorities and staff priorities really set the foundation for when we get to this time of year and we're setting the budget, we have a pretty good understanding of what the focus should be and agreement. So that, I think that really helped and made the process pretty smooth. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. All right, thank you, Mr. Corman. Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has five committee reports for reading.
Okay. Finance Committee Committee Report, King County Conservation Futures Grant for the May Creek Greenway. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the amendment to the King County Conservation Futures Interlocal Cooperation Agreement to accept $450,000 in grant funding for one parcel acquired in 2015 as part of the May Creek Greenway, located east of I-405 along May Creek, called the Fossett East Property. The Committee also recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the amendment, and that the associated resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. The Committee further recommends that the budget be adjusted to reflect the receipt of the grant funding, and that the funds be reallocated back to the Capital Improvement Fund, 2017 King County Parks Expansion Levy Proposition 2 account, which is Fund 316, and the Parks Impact Mitigation Fund. This is signed by the vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the findings of the Finance Committee. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next Finance Committee report is regarding compensation for a new employee. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the city council to compensate a senior systems analyst at Step E of Grade A-24 effective November 16, 2016. This is signed by the vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the findings of the Finance Committee. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the next report is regarding an amendment to the 2016 budget. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an amendment in the 2015-2016 budget appropriations in the amount of $9,233,273, with the total amended budget to be $695,345,360 for the biennium. The Committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next report is regarding a utility billing adjustment for a dental facility. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to grant the waiver requested for water sewer and King County Metro-related charges from a water leak at the service address of 4300 Talbot Road South, as presented for the total amount of $2,223.94. The adjustment includes city water, $367.14, city sewer, $658.32, and King County Metro, $1,198.48 charges above their normal uses. This is signed by the committee vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the findings of the Finance Committee. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the final Finance Committee report is approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on November 14, 2016, claims vouchers 351-588, 351-596 through 351-961, 929-16, 100616, 101316, 102016, 5140 through 5141, 5147 through 5156, and one wire transfer and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $4,687,234.90, and payroll vouchers including 607 direct deposits and 47 payroll vouchers totaling $1,250,752.20. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next is Ms. Perez.
Non-finished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McGurven?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Witchy?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning and Development Committee has some committee reports. Okay, first, Planning and Development Committee report is the adoption of the 2016 King County Surface Water Design Manual. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the city code revisions to adopt the 2016 King County Surface Water Design Manual with city amendments to meet the requirements of the Department of Ecology's 2013-2018 Western Washington NPDES Phase II Municipal Stormwater Permit. The Committee further recommends that the ordinance be prepared to include the low-impact development code revisions previously approved by council on September 26, 2016, to be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next report is regarding a city center advisory board appointment. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in mayor laws appointments to the city center community plan advisory board for Diane Dobson, term expiring 12/31/2017, Ryan Hammond, term expiring 12/31/2017, and Robert Prather, term expiring April 30, 2017. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur in the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next report is regarding a fee waiver request. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve a 50% waiver of the development and mitigation fees as provided for in Renton Municipal Code 41210C for the Culpet Sunset Terrace redevelopment Phase 1 project with a total of 108 multifamily residential units, on the condition that the building permit is issued no later than December 30, 2016. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur with the committee report from the Planning and Development Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. McGurven, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the final report is regarding impact fees update. The Planning and Development Committee reviewed a jurisdictional comparison and the current rates charged by the city for transportation, parks, and fire impact fees. In order to ensure the city is able to continue to keep pace with growth and increasing costs to provide adequate infrastructure, the committee recommends the rate for parks and fire be adjusted to the full amount identified in the August 26, 2011 rate study for impact fees for transportation, parks, and fire protection. The committee further recommends the rate charged for transportation be adjusted to half the amount identified in the July 5, 2016 rate study for impact fees for transportation. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Last one. I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. McGurven, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, thanks, Jason. And as if you didn't have enough to read, we're going to move into legislation.
Yeah, why not? Okay, so the first resolution, let's see. First resolution is regarding the Sunset Court Park surplus. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington declaring the Sunset Court Park located on Harrington Avenue Northeast surplus and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign such documents as necessary to transfer title.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next resolution is regarding the Conservation Futures Interlocal Agreement. Resolution of the city of Renton, Washington authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to the Conservation Futures Interlocal Cooperation Agreement between the city of Renton and King County by including $450,000 allocation for the acquisition of one open space parcel in the May Creek Greenway.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that this resolution be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the following ordinances are for first reading. The first ordinance is regarding the property tax levy for two thousand seventeen. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, establishing the property tax levy for the year two thousand seventeen for general city operational purposes in the amount of twenty-four million, two-hundred-thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next ordinance is regarding gambling tax code amendments. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Section five-eight-five of Chapter Eight Gambling Tax of Title Five Finance and Business Regulations of City Code, providing an exemption for gambling tax imposed on gross receipts from bingo games and raffles conducted by certain bona fide charitable or nonprofit organizations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Next ordinance is regarding business license fee changes. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Section five-five-three of Chapter Five Business Licenses of Title Five Finance and Business Regulations of City Code, increasing the business license registration fee to one-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next ordinance is regarding solid waste rates for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Section eight-one-ten of Chapter One Garbage of Title Eight Health and Sanitation of City Code relating to year two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen services and utility rates for all customer classes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the next ordinance is regarding piped utilities rates. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Sections eight-two-two and eight-two-three of Chapter Two Storm and Surface Water Drainage, Sections eight-four-twelve, eight-four-twenty-four, and eight-four-thirty-one of Chapter Four Water, and Section eight-five-fifteen of Chapter Five Sewers of Title Eight Health and Sanitation of City Code, establishing utility rates for two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next ordinance is regarding the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen biennial budget. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting the biennial budget for the years two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, in the amounts of two-hundred-and-forty-two million, three-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, and two-hundred-and-thirty-three million, three-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand, seven-hundred-and-six dollars, respectively.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the final ordinance is regarding an amendment to the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen biennial budget. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending the city of Renton fiscal years two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number fifty-seven-thirty-seven, and thereafter amended by ordinance numbers fifty-seven-fifty-five, fifty-seven-sixty-four, fifty-seven-seventy-seven, fifty-seven-eighty-nine, and fifty-eight-oh-eight, in the amount of nine million, two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Jason.
You're welcome.
Moving on to new business, Mr. Corman.
Okay, yes, Mr. Mayor, a few items. The first one is I would like to move that we create a committee on committees that will assign, determine recommended committee assignments for next year, and that that committee on committees would include, next year's council president, council member Pavoni as the chair, next year's council president pro tem, council member Prince as the vice chair, and I would serve as the third member.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that we create a committee on committees for next year's council operations that will include Armando Pavoni, Ed Prince, and Randy Corman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, and then next I would like to announce a Committee of the Whole meeting for a week from today, Monday, November twenty-first, at five-thirty PM here in council chambers. We have three items on that agenda. The first is regional issues. The second is two-hundred-millimeter redevelopment, RFP evaluation, and the third item is animal control services. Okay, and then, I'm just making sure, we don't have anything else, right, Mr. Covington? That's, that covers it for next, next week. Okay, and then, let's see, oh, one other thing I wanted to bring to council's attention is since we completed the budget, effectively our budget deliberations tonight, and had the first reading of the ordinance, if we, if we have the second reading with no issues next week, Mr. Person suggested, and I think it might be a good suggestion, canceling the meeting, the last meeting of this month, that would be right after the Thanksgiving holiday. Part of the rationale is that it's a short week getting up to that, so it's a lot of work to get an agenda put together. So, we don't have to decide tonight, we can decide next week, but if you have a preference,